Presentation by Matt Weatherly of the FY 2024 Classification and Compensation Study Results for the Town of Carefree by Public Sector Personnel Consultants in Review Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution 2024-03, Accepting the Report Results and Making It a Public Record.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, members of council, ready for me?
I have a few things to say.
Yeah, go for it.
I appreciate you being so anxious. So just during the, just to review, during the last budget cycle, we had a lot of discussion about compensation. And so as a result of that, we thought it's only right to just get ourselves calibrated, figure out where we stand relative to the marketplace. And we want to do right by our employees and right by our town. We don't want to overpay or underpay. So with that in mind, we decided to search out a consultant to help us do a basically job classification and a compensation study. And so to kick that off, I had two people join me in that effort. One is Sharon Smith, she's a resident of our town. And so Sharon actually wrote her doctoral thesis on compensation and a book about compensation. And she was a big player, very much involved when AT&amp;T was broken up and figuring out compensation plans at that time for AT&amp;T. We also had Councilman Michael Johnson participate. So Mike Johnson, nearly 40 years of work as a CFO in startup companies, high-tech startup companies, Fortune 500 companies and public companies. So we wanted somebody to help vet those consultants which stepped forward. So we put out a request for qualifications in RFQ. We got three responses. So the three of us went through them and we selected PSPC, the Public Sector Personnel And that's Matt's company. So why did we select them? One, they're based in Arizona. They've done a lot of work with small and large communities in the state of Arizona, Cave Creek, Paradise Valley, Scottsdale, Apache Junction, Maricopa. They've done over 100 easy Arizona public employers they've reviewed. And we thought he would bring the most knowledge and background to what we needed to accomplish. So with that, I'll turn it over to Matt. Thank you for coming.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Brief presentation, mayor teed it up, you know, pretty cleanly and succinctly in terms of how we arrived here. We have had the good fortune to work with quite a few public employers throughout the United States, home base for all of our staff. I get to be the pretty face, so it's not just the Matt show, but public sector personnel consultants, we have full-time staff that do about 70 of these a year. A little bit less travel, excited to kind of drive here instead of fly here. So I'll keep my remarks fairly brief and highlight our study findings. We initiated in early December by meeting with each staff member to review their job description. We do have some minor title modifications that we would propose. So, you know, if and when we shift to a now what, you know, portion of this, this evening will be kind of the findings of our work. You have not any real action to be taken per se, other than to perhaps accept those findings. But in reviewing job descriptions, to ensure that when we make our market comparisons, we're doing so based on actual job duties. Now, the challenge of any employer, public or private, that frankly has fewer than maybe 300 to 400 employees, is that your staff wears a lot of hats. Those comparisons out in the market, while ideal, are never succinctly perfect one for one. The city, the town, you know, competes with agencies, large and small, in the immediate area. So we worked to define a market for that. The great majority of your employees, you know, live or came from within commuting distance of the town. I think it's very important that we recognize that, you know, inasmuch that there's competitors and there's comparators. Comparators might be a little bit more like us in terms of either population, services, staffing levels. Competitors might be the bullies, whether they're down the street or a couple miles away. They have more openings, they have more jobs, they have more positions, and they love to take people that have a pretty broad job assignment. They love to take people that have a resume that says, well, it might state that I'm a maintenance technician, or it might state that I was the accountant, but here's the other eight things that I did, or the other 18 things that I did on my job description. So that kind of gets baked into this cake a little bit when we make those market comparisons. We collected job descriptions, organization charts, salary plans, some high-level benefits notes from the comparison agencies that kind of represent a pretty localized model. Frankly, it's a challenge always to define a market. But through the, kind of the, understanding of where people come from, where we have lost people to, and certainly where people drive from, we landed on this list. There are certainly some big players on this list. We had to be very cautious, less so at the line staff level. Frankly, I would, you know, probably state that your line employees that are not supervisors or managers are doing as much or more than the employees that are in some of the larger cities that are on this list. Scottsdale, for example, has 22 people that do one thing. You have three people in your public works department and they kind of do everything, right? So thank you. So that just kind of sets a little bit of the tone for going into something that seems pretty simple, right? You know, but is a little bit more than that when we ponder or at least consider job duties, job responsibilities, what lands on a job description. In our experience, you know, public employers are terrible at telling residents no. Like, no, we don't do that. So we figure out, okay, yes, we'll do that. Great, staff, how do we figure out, how do we do this, right? How do we add this? Who can take it on? Who has the background or who can learn? And then we'll go say, yes, we can do this, you know, kind of thing. We did not get into a deep dive on staffing, but we did look at some of the smaller communities on this list and removed public safety, removed utilities, and looked at staffing levels to say, okay, per capita, how many staff do we have per thousand residents? Well, Carefree has about four staff per thousand residents. The smaller agencies on this list, the Cave Creeks, the El Mirage's, the Fountain Hills, Litchfield, they have about five and a half employees per thousand, okay? So you're pretty lean, right? That's not a bad thing, but that also starts to shape some of the now what that we'll have perhaps at a later conversation. But the now what being, where do we want to position ourselves and how do we defend, justify, and sustain a salary plan? What is the appropriate wage and benefit to provide each of our staff in light of, right? And A, in light of what's being paid in the market and what's being offered in the market job by job, so we did that analysis. Also, in light of what other factors might influence the town's ability to recruit and to retain. Performance expectations, certainly the abundance of localized competition, you know, any other factors that, you know, on a going basis influence turnover, recruitment efforts, a desire, ability, and intent to pay on some type of conservative to aggressive sliding scale, okay? We also included private sector data where appropriate. You do have some positions that have, you know, finance responsibilities, IT responsibilities, certain of your public works folks. There's supportability there between the public sector and the private sector. So we looked at not only these communities and their job descriptions, and that's the great benefit of looking at the public sector. They have job descriptions, published salary plans, budget documents, organization charts, very, very transparent. So we tend to stay in our lane of public sector work. But we also utilize some published survey data from Economic Research Institute to help inform or at least enlighten, you know, any movement or pattern that may exist in the private sector. Certainly, people with certifications, you know, you're adjacent to some of those, right? You've got a partnership with a utility and a water utility. There are private utility districts around. They're excellent at stealing people that have or can get and keep certifications because they're all enterprise fund money, right? And it's, you know, kind of like when we go through the drive-through. It costs more, cool, we'll charge more, right? You know, that's kind of that private sector mindset. So we want to at least acknowledge for those positions that have some portability. Not every job has a private sector equivalent, you know, over into the public sector. But we looked at that data as well. At a very high level, the first thing that we do is largely a paper exercise, and that is comparing salary ranges. Local governments have formal salary plans. They classify all of their jobs onto salary ranges that have a minimum, that have a maximum. What does vary from community to community is if some of those communities have steps where they move people just kind of automatically through a step plan. Those agencies might have five steps, 15 steps, 25 steps, or they may have an open-range scale, which is similar to Carefree's, with a minimum, a maximum. I'm going to calculate a midpoint, right? The midpoint gives me my bearings to try and offset that volatility of how wide or how narrow each community's pay structures and pay ranges might be. Now, that feels like that's down in the minutia, but it helps inform some of our findings. Our findings, again, are kind of a paper exercise. They can become anecdotal very quickly, but we compare midpoints, right? So we look at job descriptions, we vet out comparable job duties for each of your classifications. About half of the jobs that we surveyed, just better than half, look pretty good. You know, we're competitive. For about half of the positions that we surveyed, we're more than 5% behind market on paper in those pay ranges for about the other half. So just better than a 50/50 split where 56% of the jobs are competitive, 44% are sliding a little bit behind. The pay ranges can be adjusted. You know, they can be adjusted with or without consideration for actual employee salaries. Ideally, I want to see your journey-level competent performers reach the middle of that range in a pretty succinct manner. Five to seven years maybe on the outside. I want to make sure that I leave room for a new hire, perhaps lower in the pay range, a star performer, a long-tenured individual, a little bit higher in the pay range. But the goal is to ensure that our, I think, our goal is to align our pay ranges to market averages. Now, I pause there because there's a possibility or a future discussion around philosophy. You know, what is it or what is our intent or our stated strategy? Do we want to pay at market average, right? So define market, then define average, job by job. So about half of your pay ranges look pretty good right now. Half of them are a little bit behind. You know, nothing leaps off the page in saying, wow, we're way behind. But I will say, reality also wins. Positions like your engineer that go vacant for a while when you post it, it's very difficult to find those folks, right? They can be disruptive internal equity-wise even, their market value compared to maybe how the organization wishes to value our reporting relationships can be a little bit disruptive. There are also instances where two things can be true at the same time. I may say, oh, your range for engineer looks great. And you might tell me, great, it's been vacant for two years, or one year, or nine months, or that kind of thing. So two things can definitely be true at the same time, but reality also wins there. And I would defer to staff a little bit with respect to any experiences that they've had with either turnover or refilling positions as they become vacant. We looked at benefits at a very high level. Benefits as a percentage of total compensation trend right around 30% in the public sector. That slides around a little bit. When you have police and fire, which you don't, when you have police and fire, that number grows to about 36%, 38%. So benefits, pension contributions, those kinds of things bring that number up a little bit. By comparison, the private sector hovers about 26%, 27%. So you're wildly in line, at least with the agencies that we compared you to with respect to, you know, paid time off, leave benefits, you know, what you're allocating for benefits as a percentage of your total compensation. So similar to an audit, I don't have a ton of findings in that, you know, necessarily category. And then I mentioned really, you know, that middle bullet point here, you're running a little bit lean. Four residents per thousand, or four employees per thousand residents up against about five and a half, at least in those smaller communities. That's a little bit anecdotal because every agency's budget, management style, service level expectations, age of infrastructure, you can pour a lot into that conversation when we look at staffing and really kind of unbundle service delivery. And then that last bullet is really just kind of a futuring. As you start to look at the budget, it remains extremely appropriate to budget for salary increases within your adopted salary ranges. The data that we have presented in our brief memo can absolutely be utilized to reset those pay ranges that have fallen behind market. That is a consideration. That is not, I don't believe at this point, a recommendation or something to take action on. But as you budget for salaries, being able to express to employees, hey, we value you, the market values you, here's what we value out of what you bring, you know, to the town, whether that's education, experience, performance, consequence, autonomy, you know, all of the above. But, you know, you put these things together to kind of identify an overall market strategy or a market philosophy. We would propose at least being at market average. So those positions that survey a little bit more than 5% behind market, you could start to see a little bit of pay range movement, but nobody's going to fall out of the bottom of those ranges if you readjust, you know, to market. Really, the intent behind that is obviously to be fair for retention of current employees, but also to be realistic around when we do post a vacancy, or when we do have somebody that's either retirement eligible or moves on or gets a promotion, that we have a competitive pay range to post on our job description for that vacancy. With that, I will defer either to staff if there are further comments, or to you, Mr. Mayor, and the committee that we had a chance to work with.
Okay, well, well done. Nice presentation. Sharon Smith, you're welcome to sit next to Mr. Neese if you have any comments to, as we, as we move forward, you're welcome to speak up. Any comments or questions from council?
Mayor, this is Mike Johnson.
Go ahead.
What was striking about this study was 44% of employees being under the midpoint. And I looked at the ranges, and it ranged from 6% under to almost 13% under. When you look at the ones that were over, that ranged from about 1.4 to close to 5%. Now, we had some outliers, two outliers that were about 6% and 9% over. But in the end, when I look at the study and hearken back to my professional like, this type of study is exactly what we did in little companies, big companies, and et cetera. And we also were able to obtain outside data. Because I was in finance, we see studies from Robert Half, Higginson Struggles, Russell Reynolds, and other financial-type recruiters. We had engineering people that we'd look at. But in the end, we always looked at the midpoint and where were people and what was our retention factor? The thing that we always concluded was, it's very expensive to have turnover. And to recruit certain people with high-level skills, which where I was, were engineers in particular during the dot-com bubble, when competition was intense, was always an issue. In our case, of course, we didn't look at the private sector as comparator. However, when you look at the region and how we selected the comparables, I think it made sense. It, it, it didn't make sense to go outside where somebody had to move out of state or move hundreds of miles away for a position, because this is where we live and this is where we work. So in the end, I, I, I think the study was fair, it was well-done, and it gives us a lot to think about.
And I would second that. When we were setting pay scales for approximate, well, actually setting the guidelines to bargain pay for approximately 300,000 workers throughout the United States for AT&amp;T, that's the approach we took, to look at what were the prevailing wages for labor and product-market competitors. In most instances, these were other private firms, but it was the approach we took at AT&amp;T. And when I did studies looking at federal, state, and local government workers, we were looking at labor and product-market competitors and what those individuals with that set of characteristics could command in their local market.
So local market was always a factor?
Yes, absolutely.
I have, I have a question for Dr. Smith. So we already had a general idea that, that our staff were working within a competitive range anyway. How did we place a value on years of experience or coming in with the types of experience or performance of other duties within? So in other words, as he said, wearing multiple hats. Was that taken into consideration with this study?
Well, with the individuals, that would position them in a particular place within the range, that if you came in with a significant level of experience, you wouldn't be hired at the minimum. And it would explain why some people might be above the maximum, considerably above the maximum. Even though your goal is to pay to the midpoint, you recognize that some people have more experience, some people have more requirements on the job. The difficulty, as we know with this kind of a survey, the study, is we've got a really thin group of individuals. It's very different to look at 300,000 people across the United States versus this very small set of people within one labor market area. So, but you will expect not everybody will be at the minimum, not everybody will be at the midpoint or the max. It'll depend on their experience and what they contribute to the job. But what is true for everyone is there is a huge cost if someone is significantly underpaid, captured by another employer, and you have to replace them.
Could we put a, perhaps put a dollar value on losing one person over the amount of time to train a new person or a skill sets coming in for a particular position?
Yeah.
One year's pay?
Yeah, easily. Because even if you hire someone, you find someone, you hire them, maybe they are new to the job and they may be hired at the minimum. Even with a lot of experience, it'll take them a while to learn the ways of this particular entity. So they're not going to walk in the job and immediately be at the effectiveness and efficiency level you would expect after some months, depending on the level of the job. It may take longer or a shorter period depending on the skill level, but they're not going to come in and be absolutely at the ultimate efficiency and effectiveness the first day on the job.
Thank you.
So Matt, we just talked about...
Yes, go ahead.
About...
This is Mike.
Go ahead, Mike.
To answer your question, we always figured it costs about a year's salary to bring somebody up to speed. And that, that pretty much proved to be true over the years.
Thanks, Mike.
So Matt, so part of the, part of your task was to look at our job description. So you, we have job descriptions for every position. You interviewed our, our staff and you made sure that they were in that or if the job description was, was short or if it was needed to be added to. So when you go to other communities and compare, did you find that there's, especially in small towns, are there a lot of likes and similarities, or did you have to use some, you know, kind of poetic license to make things fit or what?
Yeah, I think the larger, the larger organizations, you know, there's always a fallacy that, you know, bigger's more organized. That's not necessarily, you know, the case. We're always at the mercy of the date, you know, of those job descriptions on those other communities. We're in the middle of our third study for Scottsdale. We just dropped up a study for Cave Creek and we just dropped up a study for Paradise Valley. So we had the luxury of knowing a little bit more than we normally would have about those jobs and those job descriptions in some of the comparison communities. The smaller ones do match up in a way, but there's some very uniquely blended positions, you know, in Carefree. You know, you have a gentleman that has one hat in finance and one hat in IT. That's a pretty unique, you know, blend. The public works positions, I think, as well, extend into, in a larger community, some more specialized job descriptions. And so you kind of have to reach across to say, wait, you're also doing facilities? Wait, you're also grading the side of the road? Wait, you're also, you know, messing with natural gas or lamps or, you know, that kind of thing, right? It's very broad. And so in those larger communities, you know, you, you see some specialized job titles, some specialized job descriptions, you know, less so in a smaller community that is a little bit more, you know, kind of of a catch-all, where we're employing generalists rather than, than specialists.
Did you find through the interview process that our job descriptions are, are accurate?
Yeah, we've got some, some working notes, you know, some things that we can just kind of update, you know, modestly. I believe the staff, you know, on a going basis reviews their job descriptions with their supervisors, which is very, very common and a healthy, you know, exercise to ensure that, you know, even if there's mutual understanding of performance expectations, those kinds of communication that occurs kind of naturally between an employee and a leader, that, you know, those don't get too far afield. But we've got some working notes, you know, on those. So it wouldn't take much to kind of do attract changes and make a few updates here and there.
Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions from council members?
Yes, if I may.
Hatcher.
On the, on the job descriptions here, I think there was a variance of 5%. Is that fairly standard in the industry? It's not broader than that?
As far as defining a, a within market?
You said 56% fell within the range, plus or minus 5%. That seemed kind of narrow, but that may be the case.
Yeah, and it's, it is an industry standard, at least for us. I, I try not to be like Peter Pan, like I do this so much and it's so much on paper. The reality, certainly over the last 18 months, has been the volatility of inflation, where a lot of agencies have thrown, you know, 4% to 8% on top of their pay scales over and over again. We are kind of fortunate in a way where we're straddling really kind of that magic July 1 date. However, you know, the last two years, a lot of public agencies in Arizona provided more than one salary increase for their staff in reaction to inflation. So we did not age the data. We did not push the data forward past July 1. If we were to do that, I think I would be applying about 3.5% to give you an idea of how much inflationary anticipation there would be for the balance of 2024. But we have, as a standard, typically used plus or minus 5% just to give us that room for that occasional mid-year adjustment that might have occurred that we missed like two weeks after we pulled the data or that kind of thing, so.
Thank you, Matt. And just a comment I had when I saw one of my houses, I had that utility company come out and turn off the gas. And then I realized I need to have that gas on for additional inspection. So I asked the individual if he would turn the gas on, and he replied, no, I can't do that, I'm just a gas turner offer, I'm not a gas turner owner. So that was a very specific job description. And by a larger enterprise, I always thought that was entertaining, but...
Yes. Yeah, well, people take for granted, right? Even, you know, certainly in local government, all of the positions have very specific requirements, a specific set of knowledge, skills, certifications in many instances, you know, that become a commodity, right? And, yeah, depending on how long it's been or how long you go in between surveys, you know, over and over, flat adjustments, you know, eventually we get it right for some positions even by happy accident, but we fall behind for others. And so those positions that start to slip a little bit behind market, it is important that we look at market data periodically. Public sector, probably every five to seven years. The last two years have been extraordinary, so take the last two years out. And I think it's very healthy to look at survey data every five to seven years. The league, you know, of cities puts out a salary survey every year. That can at least be used as a side course. I don't tend to use it as a main dish just because it gets dated really, really quickly. And it is more of a benchmark study, it's a little bit more generic. But that's not a bad resource either, just to ensure that we're keeping in touch, especially with those core service positions that are frontline staff, your public works tech, your code enforcement officer, your court clerk, you know, those positions that I would say everyone has with the asterisk that, you know, smaller communities, they, they're a little bit more than that, so.
And just in closing this, I know there was a lot of laughter when we were talking about job descriptions and duties early when we had everybody coming up, making their presentation, the respective responsibilities within the, the town. But there's no doubt through this study and your assessments that our staff is small and, all kidding aside, they do wear a lot of hats.
Yep.
And we have to appreciate, well, they may be in that middle range with respect to their salary, but, you know, there's no doubt they're providing more than what we're paying them for in, in general. So I just wanted the, you know, people to recognize that they work, they work pretty hard and do a great job.
Well said. Yeah, so for those who don't know, I believe this is the first time we've ever had such a study done.
Yeah.
And doing it, you know, every seven years or so is probably money well spent, just to make sure we're, we're treating, doing everything right and treating everyone correctly. The, I do have a question about, when you go out to a municipality, so you go to Cave Creek or Paradise Valley and you ask them for data, what, how, what do they give you? How does it work?
Yep. Yeah, so, you know, those public entities are subject, you know, to open records requests. They have some time to acknowledge the request and some time to fulfill, you know, the request. My favorite ones are the ones that also send us a bill for... My favorite ones are the ones that also send us a bill for copying, even if it's emailed to us. None of your comparators were in that situation this time. They provide to us adopted salary plan typically, which is either by ordinance included in the budget or at the very minimum a personnel manual item, where they are very specifically providing us the 2024 adopted salary ranges for all their classifications. Their budget documents are typically online. We take advantage of those to gain access to organization charts, understanding of staffing levels in each department, reporting relationships, and then the job descriptions. Thanks to online providers like NeoGov and GovernmentJobs.com, an overwhelming majority of public agencies spill their job descriptions out to it. It is intended to be a recruitment platform, but it also houses all of their job descriptions. And so that gains us access to those important bullet points that describe job duties and responsibilities, knowledge, skills, and certifications and experience required so that we can say, this is an adequate enough match for me to put this job on a piece of paper, you know, with the background data saying, okay, here's the eight communities that have or reported a court clerk. Here's what their salary minimum is, their salary maximum is. We calculate a midpoint. But then we turn around and offer to all of the participants a copy of the survey as well. So even though it is all public information and quite frankly readily duplicated, they can see some of that aggregated data as a participant, you know, as well. So we tend to go with a soft knock on the door rather than the big formal open records request that, you know, invariably bounces around from the clerk's office to the attorney to the HR department. And then the city manager is like, well, why didn't you give it to them two weeks? You know, it's like, wait, you know, we can do this kind of through professional channels, you know, HR to HR. So we tend to do it, you know, that way. And then, just so happened, right, that we've had a chance to work with a couple of these survey communities in the last three to five years. And a couple of them are active now where we're doing some survey work, some full classification, you know, renovation work, so. Got a little bit of an insight, kind of fun as a local firm to do some local work, so.
Any other questions, comments from council?
Hi, thanks for your presentation. Can you clarify on your midpoint methodology when you went to the nine cities and towns? Did you use the midpoint for each one and then take an average of them or did you overweight, underweight, larger towns, smaller towns, or what about that?
Yeah, so we did exactly what you described, taking the minimum and maximum and dividing by two to reach a midpoint, taking the average of those midpoints unweighted, right? So at the line staff level, I would certainly contend those job comparisons are pretty solid. The higher up we go, we have to be cautious. So we might be looking at, you know, your engineer up against somebody's deputy or somebody's second-in-command or something like that. So, you know, some of the communities have an engineering director that's, you know, paid north of $200,000. That's a little bit different and maybe out of context for your classification or your position. To throw one more wrinkle in, at that management level, not all managers have a pay range out in the market. Sometimes it's just an actual salary they're at. Well, they're not classified onto a pay range, so we are a little bit at the mercy of time and job, the ability to negotiate. Those actual salaries are a little bit more volatile. I don't think we had too many actual salary data points in our market, but I mention that because it is a possibility. But the average of those midpoints to create a prevailing rate from the public sector, we did weight 50/50 up against the private sector. So an example like that public works, you know, maintenance technician, average of those eight or nine communities and a prevailing rate, and then look at the private sector and try to find some comparable positions. Within that, we've got a construction worker, we've got a facilities maintenance worker, we've got a couple of other data points. But I'm creating an individual weighted 50/50 private sector line and then just taking the simple average of those two. So public plus private divided by two. You could lean into it, you know, I think in one direction or the other. Before we did that, certainly, I try not to fuzzy up, you know, the math too much and just say, okay, simple averages, because it is all public information and the ranges are out there. I think it's something that, you know, if we got to it where we had to, you know, communicate our findings and defend them, like to the employees, to a taxpayer, you know, that kind of thing, you know, it's all, you know, data that's readily accessible, you know, out of the market.
Thank you.
I wanted to thank Dr. Smith and Councilmember Johnson for stepping forward and working on this study with you. Matt, how long did this take?
Really, you're looking at just 60 days. It was 45 to 60 days. We were fortunate that we were able to move fairly quickly and that it was local. So really, we jumped in right away in early December, met with staff, you know, made notes on the job descriptions and did the survey work, all really within the month of December and early January, you know, to arrive here.
I know that there had been some criticisms from residents that our staff made too much money, that, you know, we were, we could shake some people loose, we could do this, do that. And I think this study obviously proved, validated the fact that in many cases, they're underpaid for the work that they do.
Yeah, we, yeah, and I think I would go, you know, one further to kind of put a cap on that. We did not look at your actual salaries within the ranges, but they're all within the ranges, right? So our focus was really a paper exercise of range to range, job description to job description. But the now what part, you know, could include or should include where are people in our ranges compared to how long they've been with us? So are people achieving the midpoint? Are they moving through the pay range? What triggers a move to the pay range versus what triggers a move to an actual salary?
Yeah.
Objectively, you know, certainly as a third party, it's, that's kind of the idea. It gives you arms-length where, you know, we're not going to be in a position to review somebody's performance or, you know, aptitude or, you know, anything like that. And so it is expressing the value of a job from don't pay less than, don't pay more than, you know, and a lot of those ranges, even if it's more than 5%, you know, if I use 10%, plus or minus 10%, we're there, all right? I've got no jobs that are more than 10% ahead and I've got maybe one job that's more than 10% behind. So, you know, we're there. So if employee salaries are within those ranges, I would say keep doing what you're doing. Periodically look at the market. Continue to budget for salary increases within those ranges. That's appropriate.
Thank you.
Just one more.
Sure.
In finance, you would normalize data against the revenue, sales revenue, or balance sheet values. Do you normalize the data relative to the size of the town, the population, or the revenue that the town, tax revenue would derive? What base parameters do you use to try and compare us relative to Scottsdale, so it's more comparable?
Yeah, we did it at the job match level instead, right? So for example, your court administrator, not to pick on any one position, city clerk, you name it. Those are a little bit more size-sensitive. I've got to be cautious about what job I compare that to in Scottsdale. And so I didn't reach across and say, what does Scottsdale City's clerk make and what does your town clerk make, right? I looked for a more comparable position within the city clerk infrastructure that might be a level down from that. That's different than the line staff. I would defend all day long that your public works technician is doing as much or more as Scottsdale's public works maintenance worker, you know, kind of thing. So we did not do any adjustment, you know, to the data other than to be very cautious about what level we matched at that senior level and above, at that manager level. And you've got a handful of them, right? A PNC administrator, town administrator, the engineer position, which is not quite a management position, but it's more than, you know, your staff engineer, I think, in Scottsdale. And then, what's my other one? I mean, your foreman in public works, your supervisor, they're leaders, right? Your building official, I think, which is, you know, another one that I would be, you know, I was cautious, you know, at what level we made that comparison. But we didn't shove it down, you know, through the revenue process. And I would, I would say at the employee level, I try to avoid it simply because they don't care how you pay, they just care how much, right? And so, and I don't want to oversimplify that, you know, by any stretch, because I do recognize there are always limits to, you know, finding that intersection of ability and intent to pay at a certain level, which is why, you know, we don't have before you, you know, firm recommendations on, ooh, adjust this range, adopt this range, provide this adjustment, you know, spend this amount of money. I would love to be part of that conversation if and when that conversation needs to occur, simply because it remains appropriate within the pay ranges that we have to keep doing those salary adjustments. If they're meeting or exceeding your expectations, you know, the employees, then, you know, we're not overdoing it anywhere, right? Want to make sure we're not underdoing it or overdoing it, maybe to the mayor's point early on.
Oh, sorry.
Right ahead.
So I think it's important to, you know, just something that I have thought about for quite a while is that when you look at Phoenix and Scottsdale, they're really kind of like the price setters and all of the smaller towns are...
Tempe.
The price takers. And so we have to deal with the reality of being in the Phoenix MSA...
Yep.
And deal with the reality of it.
Yeah, it's a challenge. I would say be marginally grateful. I don't know, you know, how much you have to pay MCSO, but being in public safety is not a cheap thing. Yeah, certainly. Being in the utility business is also a highly competitive, you know, thing. We do 20 to 30 studies a year in the metroplex of Dallas. There are 60 cities within two hours and they all try to be in the top five. They're wildly competitive. And that's the same way here. You mentioned MAG earlier. I try to avoid, you know, MAG meetings because there's council members from multiple cities and towns in the same spot. And here I am talking about comp and then they get going like, what are you doing, you know, to me on police officer? Or why are you paying this much on your dispatcher or whatever? I mean, it's very, very competitive and, you know, Tempe lives to beat out Scottsdale and Scottsdale wants to beat out Phoenix and, right? I mean, so they all have an adopted philosophy that says, okay, give me market or give me market plus five, you know, and kind of the sheer reality. Unfortunately, you live in a fishbowl in the public sector as well, so it's no secret, you know, what everybody offers. Best case, you know, you've got billboards up that say, you know, hey, Phoenix, come work in Paradise Valley as a police officer. You know, those types of things happen all of the time and it's getting a little bit more ruthless than probably it was, so.
And if I could add, again, even if Phoenix and Scottsdale set the market, the smallest towns cannot significantly underpay the market or they will continually lose employees and go through those turnover costs and affect the quality of life and the services that the town can offer.
He ended up being like a training university for big towns.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, other comments from council?
Yeah, Matt, this is Mike. I'd just like to point out, we're declaring seven people to be comparable, seven people below and two above. But, you know, in looking at the numbers, just pure numbers to numbers, there's only two people in the town that are above the midpoint. I mean, everybody's below the midpoint, 14 people, unless I'm not reading this chart right.
Nope, you are correct.
So I just wanted to make that clear. Nobody's getting rich there.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Certainly not, council.
Yeah, certainly not us. Okay, so hearing no additional comments, we'll open up to public comment. So for those who have submitted a slip for public comment on this agenda item number eight, just invite you to come up to the podium, state your name and address and speak for, limit your comments to no more than three minutes. So Mr. John Mattis.
I appreciate what Councilman Johnson has done, Dr. Smith. This is an important thing for salary surveys for employees, having worked in the public sector for longer than I want to admit. I was on five negotiating teams. The, what I have a problem with, I've never worked and gotten a salary survey that did not include benefits. I realize that was covered with a 30% mark. That's not necessarily factual. Depends on what position it's at, depends on how long you've been, depends on what your compensation package is as far as, do you get family health insurance? Do you get medical retirement? What retirement plan are you at? There are different levels and I'm sure you'll find that in Arizona. It depends on, there was something called 3% at 50 for law enforcement in California. Well, it got expensive. They reduced that to 2.5% at 55. Those things add up and it goes towards a salary, complete compensation, total compensation. There's a marketing compensation firm, Pearl Meyer. They have eight locations in the United States. They did a great paper on five reasons why you need a salary survey. But it broke down, it's in the last line, "In addition, in conclusions to similar job descriptions, information on quote 'total' compensation that includes retirement plans, bonuses, incentives, and base salary ensure the information is relevant for your employee population. For example, some companies may pay lower salaries but have generous short and long-term incentives. There is not an understanding that lower salary rate without reviewing the corresponding That's my problem with the study that was done and I understand he was only contracted for a salary and also classification. So that's where that, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, that line came, 30% for benefits. But that's my only bugaboo about this and I don't think it's fair for employees also. Might be a better package if you also compared benefits. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So that is our one, we only had one submittal for public comments, so we'll close public comment on this issue. So Matt, can you, while you're here, just talk about, how'd you arrive at the statement that benefit spending is in line with comparison agencies at about 30% of payroll costs?
Yeah, as mentioned, we were not asked to do a full benefits analysis. When we do those, we're typically looking at who pays what for health insurance, for employees' independence, paid time off accruals. Pension generally is pretty stable in this state as far as who contributes, you know, if you're in Arizona State Retirement System. Other elements of compensation that would start to emerge might be, you know, ad pay, certification pay for your public works folks, some specialized certification pay for your engineer, even for your code enforcement officer. Court is also coming into its own for cert pay and ad pay. But as mentioned, we did not collect that information. We asked each community to provide us with their total salary spend, their total benefit spend, and, you know, requested that as a percentage to ensure that, you know, it wasn't skewed in one direction or the other. Certainly, what would be, I think, a remarkable finding would be, for example, if you said that we spend 30% and another community said they spent 35 or 40, I would start to be concerned because we have the majority of positions surveying a little bit low to market. When we look at, and I don't want to even guess, you know, at this point, but you could start to add columns together to say, okay, are we competitive on benefits? Are we covering some ground somewhere where we're, you know, suddenly paying an absorbent amount, you know, that employees are both valuing, using, and benefiting from, that's covering that position that's 6% behind? I don't know, right, until I do that, you know, analysis.
Mayor, members of council, we simply don't provide the benefits that Mr. Mattis has alluded to. We don't have retirement medical, we don't have bonuses or incentives. But if that's the direction that Councilor Mr. Mattis wants to explore, certainly we can explore that. But it's a one-to-one ratio as far as benefits. It's health insurance and retirement. That's it.
Gary, retirement is standard.
Yes.
Retirement is standard across public service employees in the state of Arizona. It's 12.25%, whatever it is, across the board for everybody.
One change of math on that, I don't believe.
Yeah, okay.
And that's why I say it's basically one-to-one is, all these public agencies are essentially offered in the same package. They're in the same insurance pools. There's a couple of different insurance pools. I'm on the board of one of them, Raggett, represents all the rural communities within the state of Arizona for the most part, and then Arizona State Retirement. There is some PTO, personal time off. Larger communities offer a more robust program than the smaller communities. So there's some difference there with personal time off, but we simply don't provide those rich packages that these larger communities do.
Yeah, I think the retirement benefits are all standardized for every employee in the town and the healthcare benefits are standardized for everyone as well in the same pool.
Well, to be in those pools tells you so much more than probably what we could even, you know, collect. The big delta really from employer to employer is who's paying what for dependent. Everybody's paying 100% of the employee, you know, health insurance. Some are paying 100% of the dependent, you know, where suddenly we have a $20 an hour job and the benefits are another $18 an hour because it's $27,000 a year to put dependents on a health insurance plan. I know as a self-employed individual what I pay for my dependents and I would, you know, I'm kicking myself for not going into the public sector myself 25 years ago. you know, I'm kicking myself for not going into the public sector myself 25 years ago. But to be able to borrow on Gary's wealth of knowledge and exposure makes all the sense in the world to not necessarily, I mean, this was not an intentional oversight, right? This was, we're coming from a position of knowledge, knowing what we know, that we're one-for-one on, you know, at least pension and health insurance. Things dwindle after that, you know? Anything that we have to offer could go up from a paid time off standpoint, from some additional certification incentives, even some education incentives that might exist. Yeah, we'll leave aside the executive compensation packages with, you know, $800 a month of cell phone and auto allowance in Scottsdale and Phoenix and $25,000 of deferred comp across Tempe, Scottsdale, Phoenix, those larger agencies, you know, your total comp number, you know, is going to take any job that we're surveying at 5% to 7% behind and push it to maybe 12% to 18% behind, depending on the level of job that we're talking about. So it can be done, the, the data, you know, can, can be done. Pretty rare to see change come out of a benefit survey, you know, portion of it. However, you know, I would never want to get out in front of asking the employees too, what do they value, right? You have finite resources. Are we spending them in the right spot? Are we expressing value to you as the employee? Are we spending on the things that you want, that you would, you know, use, that you would, you know, see as a benefit? You know, because I think I would, I would put that almost or equal to going and getting the data from the market, you know, is what do we have? What do we offer? What do others offer? What do you value, you know, as a workforce? I think that's an important part, too.
And I think it's important to note that we don't have a public safety team on, in our community, and I think that the higher volatility and the larger numbers for unfunded pension liabilities are in the PSPRS, not the ASRS.
I would agree. No, thank you all.
No, thank you, Matt. Any other comments or questions from the council?
Yeah, this is Councilman Johnson. I, Matt, as, as you recall during our deliberations of what to compare and in talking with Gary Nease, we, we concluded that it would not be practical to try and compare benefit packages to all these other communities, but we concluded that we were probably somewhat comparable other than different allowances or paying for dependents for health insurance and that type of thing. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So excluding that and just looking at salaries, I think was, at least in my opinion, and I think Sharon agrees, was the best approach.
Yeah, and this is Sharon. I absolutely agree it was the best approach.
Any additional comments? So hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2024-003. So what this means is that we are accepting the report, that's all. So a resolution, this Resolution 2024-003 is a resolution of the mayor and the town council, the town of carefree Arizona, accepting the fiscal year 2024 classification and compensation study by public sector personnel consultants and making it a public record.
Motion to approve Resolution 2024-003, accepting the report results and making it a public record.
Second.
Any other comments from council? So hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, passage unanimously. Thank you very much. Matt?